Good evening. The 7 o'clock meeting for February 9th is now in session. Oh, I'm sorry. For March 9th is now in session. So, our invocation is by Pastor Ricardo Taylor from Mount Carmel Missionary Baptist Church. Sir, would you please come up?
Let us pray. Awesome God, we come with your presence and we just thank you for your help tonight and your wisdom that you place on the common council as they make decisions to help change our community and our city. Lord, we just pray, Lord, that you would bless them and guide them with their passion. And, Lord, let this city always be an example of what you call it to be, a great city. So, we thank you tonight for every neighbor that's sitting here tonight. We thank you, Lord, for the wisdom and the strength. It's in your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the rule of the states, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Vorty, would you take the roll? Mr. Henry Davis?
I'm here.
Mrs. Shea?
Here.
Dr. Varner?
Present.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Present.
Vice President Dieter?
Present.
Mr. Furlik?
Here.
Councilmember White?
Present.
President Tim Scott?
Present.
That would be eight present. Dr. Fred Furlik has an excused absence, so there are eight present. Okay, thank you. I would like to note some special people in the audience tonight. Troop 173? How many minutes? Oh, yep, I'm sorry. Subcommittee?
To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 23rd, 2015, meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. Signed, Tim Scott and David Varner.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, special business. Sorry, jumping ahead. Like to note a few special guests in the audience tonight. We have Troop 173 from Grace Methodist Church and Troop 111 from St. Matthews. Would all you great Boy Scouts stand up, please? Thank you for coming up. You will see government in action in a very, very short time, which is special tonight. So, no special business, we'll move on. Yes, we do have special business. Resolution 1512. Sorry, Mr. Davis and Mr. Davis. John Vorty?
Special business. 1512. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana publicly thanking and honoring Cindy Ward for nearly 30 years of excellence as a news anchor at WSPT 22 and for her most notable 40-year journalism career.
Thank you. I'd like to send you Ward and my husband, please come forward. I will read this. I'm Oliver Davis, 1801 Nash Street, 6th District. Along with Councilman Henry Davis, we will read Resolution 4425-15. A resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, publicly thanking and honoring Cindy Ward for nearly 30 years of excellence as a news anchor at WSPT and for most notable 40-year journalism career. Whereas since the following advice she received after graduating with an English degree from Ross College in Winter Park, Florida, Cindy Ward has always set the bar high for her own journalism career. Whereas then Cindy Ward first launched her journalism career, President Gerald Ford was in the White House, Elizabeth Warren was the governor of Indiana, Jerry Miller was mayor of the city of South Bend, Roger Parent was common council president, and Reverend Theodore Hesburgh was president of Notre Dame. Whereas over the years, Cindy Ward stressed to always remember the why behind a news report by asking hard questions so long as they were fair, which eventually earned her the title of Councilman Professional, which is so reflective in her authentic work which she began developing in her hometown of Pittsburgh. Whereas Cindy was a critical and indispensable member of a team effort when producing the news on a daily basis, who had the confidence to acknowledge an occasional blooper and always connected with the viewing public because of honesty, integrity, and radiant smile. Whereas the common council especially appreciates how Cindy Ward truly cares about our community, which has been reflected over the decades in her thousands of broadcasts which won the respect of large following of the South Bend and greater Indiana community. Now therefore, being resolved by the common council of the city of South Indiana as follows. Section 1, on behalf of all the residents of the city of South Bend, Indiana, the common council is extremely proud to publicly honor and commend Cindy Ward for her outstanding career in journalism. Cindy Ward earned the respect of our community by being truthful and trustworthy and who truly made a very positive impact by having the unique ability to connect in so many ways, special ways, with the television viewers of WSPT 22. Section 2, the common council believes that the character and dedication of the persons like Cindy Ward enhance our community. As a gifted and genuine role model who sought excellence throughout her journalism career, Cindy will always be remembered as a trustworthy journalist who caring attitude makes her so special to so many people. Section 3, the common council sincerely hopes that Cindy Ward will now have more time to create exciting new memories with her husband, Bob, her family and friends, especially her four young grandchildren, as she begins to write a new chapter in her life. Congratulations, Cindy. Section 4, the resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the common council and approval by the mayor, signed by all council members. Officer, Detective John Vorty and Mayor Boo Drus is already signed as well. It's truly an honor to have Cindy Ward. Over the nearly eight years that I've been on the council, we've seen reporters come and go. And it's nice to have had a person in journalism who has been here, who knows the story, who understands the people, so we can call and tell her different issues. It's been great to be able to talk to her all over these episodes. At this time, we would like to have members of the common council to share their thoughts.
Thank you, President Scott. Well, first, Cindy, in my time on council, I have had the opportunity to work with you numerous times, and I really appreciate that when you are investigating a story, you reach out to everyone to do your fact checking, and it's really refreshing to see. And you've mentored many of the young WSPT reporters. They're like your kids, and I think that it's been great for me to work with them, and it's really nice to see the kids, the reporters that you have worked so hard to mentor, following in your footsteps with being very responsible with the news that they report, they're checking their facts and figures and being very professional. What I want to say is obviously to uphold democracy, it depends on an informed and engaged electorate, and to keep our citizens informed and engaged, it depends on a professional, unbiased media. And I want to thank you for your commitment to that. So, thank you very much for your service and definitely enjoy retirement.
Thank you very much.
For pretty much the same reasons, I think, I want to thank you. Hillary does a pretty good job of covering everybody's bases. I wish you all well in your retirement certainly, and I wish you hadn't looked quite so distressed as they brought up the names of Mayor Parent and Miller and all of this stuff, because unlike everyone in this audience, you and I are probably some of the two that remember all of those. Certainly best wishes, enjoy your retirement and the grandchildren.
Thank you.
Dr. Keeter?
Sure. I think we both started like in 1975, you there and myself at the police department. Years and years of all your hard work, I think the, as well-known, one of the things that didn't occur in the resolution is all the wards that you've won across the state for your years of dedicated service and reporting. And again, I congratulate you for a phenomenal career, the dozens and dozens of people that came through that you mentored and taught that have gone to other stations across the United States, the people who stayed here. It's great to see people who have stayed in the community and done the great work that you have. So, again, I wish you well and congratulations.
I certainly enjoyed watching you ever since I was even a kid, so. Congratulations, though, and we look forward to your retirement.
Cindy, I have enjoyed watching you as well, and I was not a kid. Would like to personally thank council member Henry Davis and council member Oliver Davis for bringing forth this resolution on your behalf to a person who is well-deserving. To have the word trustworthy, to be part of one's legacy, is really outstanding. So, I thank you personally for the work you've done, not only for WSPT, but for the community and all that we serve. It's been a wonderful experience, and I know that you're going to enjoy being with your grandchildren, but most importantly, retirement.
Thank you so much.
I also have been watching you since I was a kid as well. And so, what happens is that you see this newscast that come on, especially breaking news, which scares the living daylight in me because somebody probably has got murder or something, something bad has happened. But it was always Cindy on there, so I stopped liking even watching Cindy and even WSPT because of that, because that's the only thing we knew. I think the boot choke was probably your okay, right. So, I'm remembering some of these things. But what I will say, you know, beyond all of that, what I recognized as a commendable career, and this is something I will speak to my mom about, you stayed the course. And so many times that we do look at how, you know, my age group, my generation, the generation that's here right now, we have this thing about commitment that really doesn't mean anything. You stay at a job for maybe about a year or two, then we go somewhere else looking for a higher pay, or we try to figure out how we can turn the system over that works for us. And that's something that I think that we have like lost here in America, the values of staying committed to a cause or to a job for 20 years, 30 years, and you become the expert there. You know, everybody wants to move around with fast. So, that's something that I commend, not I applaud as a human being, because that is something you don't see anymore. People don't want to stay anywhere very long. You know, they sell a house two years, five years, whatever. I think it's awesome that a person can stand before a group of people and say, "I've been here for 30 years." It would've been even more awesome if WSPT would've stayed across the street, but that's a whole nother conversation.
I'm not going there.
But we're not going to go there. But what I will say, thank you for showing us what commitment means. I really appreciate that, and I think the entire community of South Bend should appreciate that as well. Oliver Davis?
I am glad to be here again, and over the years, like I said, we've had a chance to talk several times, and I've learned a lot. And it's been nice to be able to get a chance to understand the back scenes of how stories put together. And so, I want to again appreciate you, and when I saw that you were retiring, I said we have to get something to honor you. And I'm glad that we've been able to do that to you tonight. Thank you. You're the husband behind the scenes.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll tell you the truth, so I want to thank you again for being here. Behind every great woman. Behind every great woman. Wonderful.
Cindy, I am a Missouri journalism grad.
Oh, there you go.
Welcome to the Missouri mafia, because you did a great job, just incredible. And that's what, when I go anywhere, that's what I look for, and I appreciate the commitment. The 20 years I've been here thoroughly enjoyed you on the news and telling the story, and like so many others, getting the facts right. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I can't tell you how much I appreciate this honor. It means everything to me, because South Bend is my home, and to be able to be recognized by the leaders in my home is especially gratifying, I have to say. I've enjoyed working with all of you. I've worked with all of you. Can we go back way back? You know that I started when I was 12, so. But anyway, I digress. This is just wonderful for me and my family, and we appreciate it so much. And now I'll just be a taxpayer here railing on about something. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
You can sit for the rest of the meeting, too.
We've got the public portion. The public portion. Oh, yes.
A little late for that.
A little late on the public portion. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this resolution? Seeing none, any wishing to speak against, which we would not expect. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We can hear you down there.
Thank you, guys. All right, moving on, a report from city offices. We have done this meeting, it will be next meeting. Representing the city administration, I see Catherine Roos and Brian Polaski in the office. Audience, so, if that'll entertain a motion to resolve to committee of the whole.
I move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I will remain in my seat as we only have one bill that's before us. I'll call the committee as a whole to order. The committee of the whole is a portion of the council meeting, is where the common council sits as a committee. The title of each proposed ordinance is read by the city clerk, followed by a report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which held a public hearing on the bill. The chairperson announces the committee's advisory recommendation. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from area plan staff member will be first given, followed by the petitioner, who will give a formal presentation at the podium. At this time, I do ask if you have any electronic devices, if you would put them on the silent mode. I would now like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 03-15, please.
Motion to continue until March 23rd.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries. Mr. Vorty, will you please give second reading to Bill 08-15, please?
Public hearing on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10346-15 in accordance with section 11 thereof and other matters connected therewith and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, community investment sends this to the full council favorably.
Thank you so much. At this time, we ask the petitioner to come before the council and give us a brief summary of Bill 08-15. We do ask that you state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Denise Barkto, and I am the city's body council with Frost Brown Todd in Indianapolis 201 North Illinois. This ordinance is an ordinance that amends a prior ordinance. The prior ordinance was adopted by this council on January 26, 2015, and it approved the issuance of bonds payable from Edit to make certain park improvements. Once we took that information, the ordinance, to the rating agency, then a couple of suggestions, which the city, we thought, was not to the detriment of the city to make. And so, we went ahead and made, those are two changes, one to make monthly deposits rather than semi-annual of the funds received, and one increasing the percentage needed to issue parity bonds payable on the same lien as the existing bonds. So, if you have any questions, let me know, and I'm happy to answer them.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions regarding Bill 08-15?
No, is up to comment.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we move to the public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of Bill 08-15? Anyone wishing to speak in support of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is not closed. We'll move to the council portion. At this time, I would start with council member Henry Davis, if you have any comments or statements regarding Bill 08-15.
I am not going to be supporting this particular bill. I supported it in the past. I just want to be clear of the reason why I'm not. Based on the comments that we've heard and the things that we talked about this afternoon, it just doesn't sit well with me that we're going to be flowing a bond to pay for park improvements when the money is already there. I don't think it's good fiduciary responsibility on our part. I would not be in favor of that because the money is there, we're able to use the money in the different accounts that we do have, and I just don't understand why would we spend money to spend more money when we already have?
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Councilmember Dallas Shea? Thank you, Chairwoman White. As we discussed earlier, this bond, of course, has already been approved. This is more of a technical change with regards to the language, as bond counsel had explained to us earlier. We did discuss this earlier in the community investment committee, and the issue had less to do with the bill, because the bill is in fact just technical aspects of the language, but more to do with the issue of extending credit or taking on additional debt for these sort of expenses when there are in fact funds that could be used. For example, the improvements that have been discussed at Howard Park. Howard Park is now and was previously part of a TIF district. So, it does seem that as a city, we should look for opportunities to use funds on hand before we take on additional debt. I will be supporting this bill in the sense that the bond has already been approved. This has really more to do with the language and the, and bond counsel, correct me if I'm wrong, when I say this has more to do with the reimbursement schedule that the Edit payments come?
Yes, the Edit payments used to be paid on a semi-annual basis from the states and the city. All of the city's Edit bond documents, the old ordinances and stuff like that, required that when it was received, not semi-annually, that it was paid bond semi-annually. In the intervening period of time, the state has started making those Edit payments monthly. And so, the rating agency said, "If you're getting the money monthly, we would like you deposit the money to the bonds monthly rather than waiting till the end of the six month period," which in their view are...
So, this is just a reflection of...
Just a technicality.
...a change in the reimbursement and the... So, thank you very much. But as to what Councilman Henry Davis had said, I do agree that the city as a whole should look for opportunities to use cash on hand before we extend our, when we take on additional debt. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome. Councilmember Varner?
Well, I don't like to be known as a profligate spender. I don't think I enjoy that reputation. The district of bond issue is funded out of the net tax, which has been stable, and I understand the concerns. I may have voiced those same concerns at times in my career. The fact that we have the resources available, if the financing aspect allows for perhaps a better leverage of what's doing, I'm more than happy to support it. One of the things we harped at the mayor's office for as long as I can remember is we need to start doing some things for the parks and do some improvements, whether it's cash on hand or whether it's through a bond issue. At this point, I don't think too many people really care so long as it gets done. I think we have the resources there to do it. It's not extraordinary. It's 5.8 something million dollars. I hope that we and the rest of the public soon see the results so that people can, who have issues can feel better about it. I will support it.
Councilmember Scott?
No comment.
Councilmember Davis? Councilmember Dieter?
Negative.
Councilmember Furlik? Okay. At this time, we'd like to entertain a motion regarding Bill 08-15.
Favorable recommendation, second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. Bill 08-15 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. I would now ask for a motion to rise and report to the common council.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There was a second?
Yes.
Okay, yes. All those in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote?
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion carries.
Motion to resign, to adjourn the committee of the whole.
Second.
We already did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we took motion on the...
Full council is now back in session. Mr. Vorty, would you read third reading of 08-15?
Third reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10346-15 in accordance with section 11 thereof and other matters connected therewith and repealing ordinances inconsistent herewith.
Second.
Mr. Vorty?
Mr. Henry Davis?
Aye.
Mrs. Shea?
Aye.
Dr. Varner?
Aye.
Mr. Oliver Davis?
Aye.
Vice President Dieter?
Aye.
Mr. Furlik?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
And President Tim Scott?
Aye.
The vote is seven to one for passage.
Thank you. Resolutions, Kathy, do we need a motion?
Yes, a motion to continue until March 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. First reading is John Vorty, 09-15.
First reading on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1221 Miami Street, Councilmanic District 3 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
I move that Bill 09-15 be sent to area plan commission.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 10-15.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain enterprise operations in 2015 of $875,000 from the parking garage fund number 601 and $66,156 from Century Center Fund number 671.
Move to send 10-15 to personnel and finance for second and third reading on March 23rd? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2015 of $30,000 from Studio Baker Oliver Reverting Grants Fund number 209, $2 million from the Economic Development State Grant Fund number 210, and $21,157 from Central Services Fund number 222.
Move it 11-15, go to the personnel finance committee, be set for second, third reading and public hearing on 3/23.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. 12-15.
First reading on a bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana for budget transfers for various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2015.
I move that Bill 12-15 be sent to personnel and finance committee, set for second and third reading and public hearing for March 23, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you. Unfinished business. John Vorty?
No, just a motion to send Bill 2-15 to the zoning and annexation committee for March 23rd.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Thank you. New business, new business for many council members. Seeing them, move to the privilege of the floor. This is where citizens have a right to come up and talk to the council for three minutes. If there's anything you want us to look into, there are forums, I believe, over on the table. You have three minutes. Vice President Derek Dieter will time you. Please give your name and address, and you can begin.
Good evening, council. My name is Cecil Leesman. I live at 57112 Peachstone. In case you haven't noticed, we still have some snow. Had a bit of it this year, and it seems that South Bend is not likely to ever see a winter where we're not going to have a bit of snow. Now, as it happens, some of you who know me know that I like to walk. I like to ride my bike. I like to get out and do things. About that walking, it's very tough in winter to walk around in South Bend. And one of the reasons why it's tough is because walks are not being shoveled. Now, I recognize that there are ordinances on the book... Now, I recognize that there are ordinances on the books that say the city has a right to fine homeowners, I believe it's $30 now for every infraction. And I would like to propose that the council consider changing the ordinance to put some teeth into that. I would think that perhaps a two-tier approach might be appropriate, something say $50 for homeowners and $100 for businesses. I'm not so much concerned that this might be onerous on homeowners as it is to basically incentivize them to please take care of their property so that they're simply doing what they're supposed to be doing in the first place. I find it especially important that businesses, especially in downtown heavily traffic areas, don't seek to shovel all of their walkways and I suspect greatly it's because they know that they can get away with it. So I'd like to see some teeth in that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Lieutenant President Scott, really quick, may I address the council? This is my experience being on council. We do get requests like this all the time. I think it's great, I think it's awesome that people participate. But when we get those requests, it almost looks like we're not doing the job. That is not a council action, that's an administrative action, that's the mayor's office. And I always have, you know, pumped the brakes on added legislation that would increase funds because if it wasn't being done at a $5 amount, what makes it think it's going to be done at a $10 amount? And if it is done at a $10 amount, I'm going to feel like you're probably targeting people then. So I think the question that needs to come out is how much money have we been giving to these departments to do their jobs and why isn't this not being done? If it is being done, at what level? You know, so we will have some facts and figures to go off of. I think what has happened is that everybody has zoned in on the council to say the council does this, the council does that. Sure, we can handle it, but there's another component to this as well.
Councilman Davis, would you like that be part of the presentation by the city administration next meeting?
What I want to ask is that there's a letter drafted that has, you know, an understanding of what we're going to be requesting from the particular department that's going to come in and present. How many times have this law been endorsed, since when has it been on the books? How much money has been collected due to people not, you know, shoveling their sidewalks? You know, the facts and figures of how this particular ordinance works.
Okay. Noted. Okay. Thank you. Sir, you're next.
My name is Samuel Brown. I represent Citizen United for a Better Government, on the 222 East Nebraska Street. I'm going to make it real quick. Three minutes, you've got enough time to cover what I got to say. But everybody is compassionate about something. I got three of them. Team Drive, the police tapes, and the Osco murders. The Osco murders, we dropped the ball. 20 years later, we still haven't solved what happened to those people out there and there are a lot of hurt. 20 years, three trials, see if one of them trials cost a million dollars. We dropped the ball, we quit. The police tape, we'd have had the police coming for the council and the community. Let's drop it, let's move on. No, we can't. We got to get to the bottom of this and solve it. Make the people a stop being happy. Team Drive, we cannot drop that. Nobel Peace Prize winner, humanitarian, cared about a lot of people. He gave us life. We won't drop it. And we shouldn't have dropped that Osco case because those people right now are still suffering with their loved ones and we haven't taken conclusion what happened out there. There's no sustaining of the perfecting matter.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Jesse Davis, Bureau Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. I left my privilege of the floor at home, but I'll bring it and drop it to Mr. Vorty's office. I just had a few things. Number one, I've been here several times and I'd like the council to please check and see if there's been any updates on the Catherine Russe thing that's been going out and out of the special prosecutor for a couple of months. I talked to Pete Buttigieg at the last mayor's night out and asked him point blank, has he heard anything? He said no. So just curious if anybody can maybe get an update on that. I'd also received messages about some equipment that was supposedly returned to the city garage on Sample Street a few weeks ago. I put a public record request in for the video at that building and also a list of this equipment that was supposedly mysteriously returned and also a list of previous equipment that might have been reported missing from the city so that we could compare notes. I was sent an email by the legal department saying, "Hey, you should have your information in a few days." And it's been well over a week, nothing. So, I mean, I don't understand why the dragging of the feet on all these issues and it seems like everything that is brought up seems to take years to solve. So, I mean, hopefully you guys can do a little bit of pushing and get some information on this stuff.
Okay, thank you. Next?
Dan Mullis, 632 South 28th Street, H. McCann. What I mainly had to say today is to the mayor's cabinet right there. You people have got to be some of the most cruellest people I know. And I speak that from the bottom of my heart. You're nothing but cruel. I met with the mayor last Thursday at the mayor's night out and the man lied in front of my trinket, emerald. You know, I was willing to work with him. I wanted to talk with him and we got five minutes and a lot of cool talk. So now it moves to the next stage. I'll be seeing you in court.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the council? Seeing none, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good night.
She has different categories.
What's happening here?
Everybody got one. Unless she goes. Can I pull a doggie? What do you need, sir? Try a Tito? Where did the guy go? Who was talking about? Because you know what? He's 100% right except when the South Bend city cows put ice and slush on the China because I was good until the 15th. Right before Super Bowl, we got that hot slushies. I get up for next morning and there was this thing for ice. It was over. It was over. There was nothing you could do.
Yeah, I was thinking like, "Ron, what are you doing?"
What's happening here?
They do. Everybody got one. Unless she goes. Can I pull a doggy? What do you need, sir? Try a Tito? Where did the guy go? Who was talking about?
Oh, what's he doing? Because you know what? He's 100% right except when the South Bend city cows put ice and slush on the China because I was good until the 15th. Right before Super Bowl, we got that hot slushies. I get up for next morning and there was this thing for ice. It was over. It was over. There was nothing you could do.
Yeah, I was thinking like, "Ron, what are you doing?"